Okay, first I'm opening the zoning board of appeals meeting. It's January 7th, 2013, 7:30 PM. We're in room 103 at the townhouse at 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. And I'm going to open the continued hearing of 15 Great Road 2 LLC for a modification to their special permit at 15 Great Road, Littleton. And I'm going to start with a request for the report from the subcommittee that met relative to the affordable units and ask the applicant if at the same time you can put on the screen the map so that the subcommittee can report what happened at the meeting. That's fine. Jeff, do you want to start, please?
Alan, Ed, and I met with the applicant. And our concerns reigned were basically twofold. Number one, the distribution of the affordables on the site. And we made a few adjustments, which I think graphically looked pretty good. And then the other issue was the actual units. And there was a feeling that perhaps we would like to see specific units assigned to specific sites. And the pushback was, no, we really want to sell these, you know, to the buyers. And that being said, the compromise was that we withdrew, the applicant withdrew two of the potential models that were the smallest and simplest, I guess I would say, models. And then we identified, is it four or five models? Five models? Four? Okay. We identified four models of the ones that they suggested to us, that they had proposed as available for both market rate and affordable. And then there were some additional concerns about garages. We stipulated and they managed to arrange it so that every house will have at least a single garage. It might be under, it might be attached, depending on the site. If it's under, it could potentially be a two-car garage, depending on the site. Then the other thing we talked about was a first-floor master plan that, you know, an older couple might want, and in which case it would have to have an attached single garage, not a garage under, because it would not meet the purpose of the unit to have a garage under. And we had, they were able to provide, I think this is correct, two, one in each phase, that, two sites that would accommodate a plan with a first-floor master and an attached single garage. And as far as I know, because I got these this afternoon, they managed to address all those concerns.
Alan, do you want to add anything?
That's it.
Your experience there?
That was, that's it.
And who was attending at the meeting, please?
Alan, Ed, and I.
Alan, and the applicant?
And the applicant, yeah.
Now, can you walk us through, either Jeff or the applicant walk us through?
Yeah, why don't you have maybe a more, you know, intimate knowledge of the ins and outs than I do?
So, to follow up on, the affordable styles that are available are the rosebud, foxglove, pesto, and laughing tiger. And the Nora Abbey and the All I Need are no longer affordable options. The rosebud is the first-floor master option, and there's at least one in each phase.
Can you show us each of those? It's got three bedrooms, it's got how many square feet?
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen?
Just about.
Thank you.
How many baths?
How many baths?
Two baths.
And the next one? And that's three bed, a couple of beds? And square feet?
They're all about seventeen hundred. I mean, they're plus or minus probably eighty square feet.
Okay. And then the next one? That's the garage under pesto, and that's a two-car garage under in every instance? No?
I think that's shown as a, as a one-car garage.
Well, the other, how does this fit in? Because we, there was some interest in having a porch on the pesto, and so they're submitting this. There's two, there's two, there's two versions that you've submitted in addition to what's shown up there. Both have porches, one has this.
And the pesto might have a porch, okay.
Yeah.
And that?
Are we applying the pesto that the porch for the will be?
No, it's enclosed.
Why, you tell me. No. You're going to give that as an option.
It was not proposed with a porch, it can be offered or added. It won't be added after, it will be...
But in addition, you showed this one.
Is that going to be the base pesto?
No. That is actually, dimensionally, it's identical to the porch.
Yeah.
It's just enclosed.
Okay.
What's the square footage on, oh, you said they're all about seventeen hundred. How many baths in that one? Two bed, two bed?
Jeff, the, the two iterations of the porches are based upon the conversation we shared.
Yeah, definitely.
And especially around the... Exactly, because you had mentioned that that was a planning feature from down south.
Yes, yeah.
And that we would need to have a porch on the front as it faced out, or I should say, in.
There's the, there's the circle that has the houses facing inward around a lawn, and those, it's most important to have porches because that's the way it's set up to have a, of course, you know, to have, to see your neighbors sitting on their porch and, you know, go like this, so, hang on.
And the last one, the laughing tiger, please?
Yes.
Now, which one or two have the first-floor option?
The rosebud.
And it has a full bath on each level?
Yes.
Okay. And now?
So, the affordable locations are in red. Can we also...
Oh, I see. So those numbers refer to which sites that house will fit on?
Yes.
The rosebud has two and a half bathrooms.
I'm sorry, just because, because...
The red numbers are where it's located on the plan right now.
So then can you show us the plan? So this is...
So I'm going to pass these down, and they contain this chart, which we've seen before. And then this, which is, and there's one for every one of these.
Except this chart is amended, so if you have old charts, throw them out.
Yeah.
I'm going to start again, really.
You want to see the plan or the chart?
Well, he's passing the chart out, although he's getting the plan ready, but you can hold that up.
That looks like it has great distribution.
Yeah. I think you should have a good shot of that.
There's two of them.
Oh, I see. Those all go together.
It's the same, those, that's right here.
They all go together.
Yeah.
It has the whole package. And then that's another whole package, and that's another whole package, okay? So the distribution is a lot better. I think the subcommittee did a wonderful job of working that out.
Now, did you, you didn't pick which ones on the floor will be on each site?
No, they, they are sticking to their guns about the, you know, having buyers select their unit. And the compromise was, we, we wouldn't let them sell the smaller, the two smaller units that they, because it was important not to stigmatize, you know, the affordables. And I, I think in general, the market people will, that are buying in, will appreciate not having obviously affordable units in the, in the mix.
So these locations here and these particular housing styles are not fixed and can change?
Yes.
They're just suggested for this purpose?
There, there's a couple of them that are fixed, the two rosebud locations, one in each phase, the ones that have the attached single-car garage.
Right.
That is a fixed location. I think that was unit 22 in the first phase.
So it's...
And that was somewhat dependent on the site conditions.
Could you hold up the big map? I can't read the numbers on this. Maybe I can put my glasses on, it would help. No, you can't see the numbers very well. So where's 22?
22 is here.
And that's one of the single family, single...
First floor.
And where's the other one?
I think it's 27.
Up on the hill.
Up on the hill? Up on Buttercup?
And it's basically generated by, they have to be bigger sites to accommodate the single garage.
And there'll be a crawl space underneath on both of them, but that's okay.
Now, we looked, we looked at the distribution of the, you know, a lot of the market rates will not have basements, will have crawl spaces or slabs. And it was fairly equitable, you know, there's a reasonable proportion between the market, I mean, the affordables and the market rates.
Is there a lot of ledge in that area?
Well, it's mainly in the first phase that there's ledge.
So the two rosebuds are shown in phase one here, right?
There's one in phase two.
So that way, but it's not shown as a rosebud in phase two, right?
There's one in here.
But, but it's not, but Alan's right, it's shown as a foxglove in phase two.
You show two rosebuds in phase one.
I apologize.
What's that? I think it's just the 22.
22 is a rosebud.
Yeah.
What's 27?
It's 27, it's shown as a foxglove, and I think we...
No, 22 is on the chart as a rosebud.
Twenty, what's 27?
27 is on the chart as a rosebud.
For the second phase.
It's a rosebud, yeah.
So we just got the wrong picture on this?
It's just the wrong picture. It's on, it's in, it's graphically correct on the chart.
Okay. So in the decision, are we going to specify that?
I don't think we have to specify that. I think we have to specify that two of the affordable units need to be, have a first-floor bedroom.
Well, no, I think, because these are sensitive to the site, the actual occupation. I thought I heard Sue say.
Is there a possibility that somebody might say, I want a first-floor bedroom and not a garage, and I don't like the rosebud, so let me have the, whatever?
The rosebud can go on a myriad of sites.
No, I'm saying on this...
Oh, could someone else do something else for that?
Is it possible an affordable buyer might say?
Yeah.
I don't think we should offer it without a garage.
I think it should have to have a garage.
It's just the market.
I think a rosebud is a perfectly good house, so I wouldn't have hesitation.
So let's put it in the decision that those two lots are, the rosebud designed with a garage.
If you own any, you have a garage.
Yes.
I think you guys did a great job of getting them spread out. I do too, and I think you picked some nice homes.
And notwithstanding the little, you know, which, this was a great graphic to go with the presentation.
We're only doing capitalism. See, Bill, I made a joke. You say, you can never do. You can change it. No, you know, it's not first-time property.
Get that into record.
But Leslie's not my...
All right, so that was a good job, excuse me, that was a good job bringing us to this point. And it sounds like unless somebody wants to make a comment from the board, is everybody satisfied with that distribution and those selections?
Which?
Yes. Okay. Anybody in the room that wants to comment? Actually, I don't want to single anybody out, but are there butters here today? Okay. So the next task before us was, we were asked, the decision committee was asked to have a subcommittee meeting yesterday to kind of bring us up to speed. And mostly, we focused in on the list of waivers and identifying those so that the board could discuss those tonight as well.
Sorry, Sheri.
Yes?
Before you get onto that, I had a question in regard to this table.
Go ahead.
I think we have 12 two-bedrooms in the balance.
Correct.
Three-bedrooms. I think I counted already 11. And I couldn't understand how the table worked. Where you show two-bedroom market units, you show options for three-bedroom houses. And it seemed to me that if it's a two-bedroom market unit, the option should be limited to two-bedroom models.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I can address that. I was the one who did the chart. What we did, Ed, was the number of bedrooms are based on the units we chose. So it's going to, they're going to have to monitor each phase to make sure the phase, each phase is the correct number of two-bedroom units. Because someone may opt for a two-bedroom unit where it's shown as a three-bedroom unit.
So which means that someone else would have to...
Right, so maybe a case of...
You could tell a three-bedroom on another side.
Yeah, it might be a case of when they get down, you know, one of the last five or six lots, one of them has to be a two-bedroom unit because they've used up their allotment.
So that's something the enrollment will have to monitor and issue and go with.
Well, who would be monitoring that?
Whoever constructs. It's related to sewage, right?
Whoever constructs.
The limitation is sewage.
You're, who's going to be the monitoring agent of this one, DHCD or...?
It would also be tied into the Board of Health.
Mass Housing.
And sign off for the septic.
Well, that raises...
I thought our Board of Health didn't have to sign off.
No, that raises the comment from Jim Giriffey that came in tonight. His comment was, "No additional living space can be created in a dwelling unit on any lot that would cause the bedroom count to change per the definition in Title V unless approved by DEP. The applicant may want to consider covenants on the for sale units that limit the number of rooms or bedrooms." Now, I know that the Shobo Board of Health and Jim Giriffey doesn't have jurisdiction over your septic to sign, but your attorney has said that the condominium documents are going to say that. The decision is going to say that. And Alec, I would like to hear from you that you're okay with letting the deed say it too, putting it right on the deed.
It's required.
Okay.
By deed payment.
Okay.
That no additional living space can be created?
Yeah, so each...
Each unit is limited to that.
Is limited to the number of bedrooms.
Yeah. And that raises one of the...
So they can't finish basements?
No, that's not, they can.
They can finish basements, but they just can't be finished as bedrooms.
And, and that was one of the discussions we had at the subcommittee meeting yesterday, was whether or not to allow them, as they've requested, to finish basements and to finish attic or bonus room space, and to add a deck, porch, and enclosed sunroom. And the suggestion, and I think the, the subcommittee was satisfied, that basements and attic spaces can be finished, provided that there's no roof alteration, so there's no dormer added, and that the area is labeled not for sleeping directly on the plan.
Yeah, the clarification on that, to be labeled, not to be used as a sleeping area. And sleeping area is the way it's defined in the state building code. So, you know, just call it a bedroom or anything else, you call it a sleeping area. That way, it's covered under the building permit and covered under the certificate of occupancy and everything else, so that if somebody were to be found to use it as a sleeping area, it'd be in violation of the certificate of occupancy and...
So each, since these are all for sale, each individual deed would say that this is, this property's limited to two bedrooms?
Right.
Or three bedrooms?
Right.
And none of these houses are more than a three-bedroom?
Right.
Okay.
And then if somebody wants to finish their basement space so that their children can make noise downstairs, instead of on the main living level, they can?
Children, grandchildren.
And whatever. Now, in addition, we talked about decks, porches, enclosed sunrooms. And John, taking a page kind of out of your book, people, I felt people should be allowed, this, this is their home, whether they're market or affordable units, they should be allowed to use their home as anyone else in town uses it, by having a deck, a porch, or enclosed sunroom on the rear or on the side. Not in the front, because it would impact the appearance of the homes and the distribution in the neighborhood. But on the deck or the, on the side or on the rear. I personally didn't care if it was completely enclosed, or if it was a porch with screen or just a covered porch. I think it should be up to the individual owners. And 12 by 14 as a limitation on size seemed to be reasonable.
Are we worried about impact on, on neighbors?
A good question.
Especially with the affordable units? I mean...
What has been suggested is that they're going to create a building envelope. And the envelope is going to contain the maximum footprint that can happen on any of those lots and still satisfy fire safety and view and everything else. And so, for instance, yeah, thank you. This was, this was passed around as a sample of what they would do. They would create a building envelope. And so the deck or the screen porch can go on the back or on the side, provided that the dimensions don't exceed or overlap the building envelope.
Is that what we're looking at with the dotted lines here?
Yes.
Okay. Could you hold up your, your handy-dandy plan there again, because it shows it also? A lot easier format.
Cheryl, there are going to be many of these that will not have the ability to have porches.
Right, I see what you're saying. For example?
Like 1, 2, 3, or 2, 3, 4, 5?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, maybe the 2, 3 might have one on the side, maybe.
But it has to fit in the envelope, is the point.
Okay. Is that plan of envelopes fixed now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so that, what that does is that just enables a homeowner, even a subsequent generation homeowner, to come back in to the building department, as any of us can do, and say, I'd like to have a 12 by 14 deck on my home.
Can I add something?
Yes, please.
My only concern with that, having these porches put on, there's two concerns. One, it could become a collectall if it was on the side of the house. So it could become unsightly, because it is open and people could just be putting whatever in that porch. And you have a condo development, and to me, you'd want covenants to, to keep the whole area in keeping with the rest of the homes. The other thing is, if you allow a porch to be built two or three years down the line, who's to say, who's going to be in charge of how this porch is going to look, the design? Is the design going to be in keeping with the homes? Who's, who's going to control the, the quality of this porch and the construction of it?
The condominium community.
Are we ready covenants such that any porch needs approval?
Well, I mean, you've got to create some covenants.
Go ahead and answer it.
So it would be a typical condo association where to make an addition, you have to go to the condominium.
Okay.
The condominium documents will be written with reference to these building envelopes and with, you know, a list of things that you can do to your home, such as add a 12 by 14, porch on the rear or side, if it fits within the building envelope. And there'll be a requirement that, that, you know, the workmanship be in keeping with the rest of the development.
Now, one more question. Are you going to create a design right now, ahead of time, for these porches so that somebody isn't creating a new design two or three years later that might not look... We're, we're going to be approving a porch that, I think we should have, know what this porch is going to look like, because other than that...
The building inspector is going to know what it looks like, because they'll have to come before the building inspector for a building permit. But just like on your porch or my porch, no one dictates to us whether our roof pitch is five or 12.
But this is in a condominium develop...
That's up to the condo association to, to police their own...
No, but we're agreeing on the design of these homes right now. We're all concerned about these, how these homes are going to look. We're concerned about the apartment building. And now you're telling, to me, I'm concerned what this porch is going to look like, that you could add on 10 years from now. And I don't see that it would be a problem drawing up a design ahead of time, and this is the porch you get. Is it going to have a hip roof, an A roof? Is it going to have sliders on it? Is it going to have screens on it? I, I think something should be thought a little bit more maybe on the details of this porch, or even what the decks are going to look like. I would want to know if I was buying in there, that five years from now, my neighbor isn't going to build a contemporary porch on a colonial-style home.
Let me just play devil's advocate. If you were buying in there, would you prefer to have mass housing and our decision dictate the style of your porch? Or would you prefer to have condominium association with architectural review board standards dictate what you can do 10 years down the road? I think you're better off with an architectural review board and a condominium association, because then you and all of your neighbors can vote together and say, you know, there's a new kind of, I don't know, solar technique that works beautifully, let's use that, that isn't in the decision.
Well, you know, if I can add in, I, I agree with what Sheri's saying, because I think it should be by the condominium association and a review board, all the people who live there, any more than I wouldn't want to be putting my personal preference on what somebody else wants to do. I mean, as a building official, you don't go and tell people what color they can paint their houses and what type of shingles they have to put on and everything else. It's up to the community to decide what they want and their desires, you know, because what I like or what you like may not be what the neighborhood would want.
Now...
Well, I disagree a little bit. I, I, because this is a unique situation. This isn't individual homes where you do whatever you want. You, you affect everybody in that neighborhood, and you do put on this porch. The thing is, as a town, it's still a condominium development. The townspeople are going to be driving through, if it, for some reason, it became unsightly because of something that...
Townspeople love to be driving through this...
John, let me just...
Well, I'm just, I'm saying, all I'm saying is, we're approving these house plans, and we're concerned about the looks of these homes.
Let me just turn it around just a little bit.
Yeah.
Any other community... Any other community around here that allows for multifamily dwelling units can have condominium projects spring up all over the place with very little town control over what that condominium association project will look like into the next generations. The reason we're so maybe paternalistic about this is because this is the first time Littleton is seeing a multifamily unit, planned unit development of this nature. And I think you put a little bit too much control onto people's freedom of choice into the future if you try to plan a deck today for somebody's use 10 years down the road. I think you have to accept that there's going to be an association of people. They're going to want to live in a place like this. They're going to want their bank to finance it with, with the most flexibility. They're going to want to work with each other as neighbors with the most flexibility. And I think by saying, Architectural Review can say, the materials have to be of a quality consistent, the exterior shingles have to be consistent with the existing building, the roof lines have to be compatible. That's what their Architectural Review is going to say in those condo documents. That's what I'm used to seeing in condo documents. For us to say today, it has to be exactly 12 by 14, and it can't be 8 by 10, or it can't be, you know--
So you're going to give flexibility on the size, too?
I think so. And I also think that their protection is going to be in their Architectural Review, because you don't want, as you said, you don't want somebody to put an open deck on the side that becomes a catch-all for clutter. You've got to hope that their condominium documents say that there'll be no clotheslines and, and things stored and carriages left on the deck outside overnight, or whatever condominium documents usually say.
Right.
And, and you just have to trust that that, a condominium is like a microcosm of a town. You wouldn't move into a town if it said, everybody who puts a deck on the back of their house has to be exactly 12 by 14 and exactly this roof pitch. You wouldn't want to live in that town. Somebody who chooses this condominium lifestyle is going to want to look at those condo documents to see what they can do and can't do.
I think, I think though, even now, you, now you're saying the sizes could change. I think, a situation could arise where somebody wants a larger deck than the neighbor would want them to have and--
12 by 14 is the limit.
The maximum is 12 by 14.
12 by 14 is the limit.
So you're going to go by square footers then, or, I mean, the square footers of the deck?
12 by 14 is the limit. They can go 8 by 10, but they can't go--
They can't go large.
They can't go, you know, 8 by 16.
So we have to specify--
12 by 14.
And, but, but I'm not sure we want to specify that, though, because of the envelope thing. There may be a situat, maybe we want to say a certain number of square feet. There may be a situation where someone can only have a three-foot wide or a four-foot wide area. But I understand John's concern, because once you have a condominium association up and running and dwelling owners, and the condominium association is a healthy, growing thing, then they have Architectural Review and all of that. But until that happens, do we want to know what things are going to look like? Do you think that's what John's saying?
Go ahead.
I think practically the way this might work is that a number of market buyers, I mean, would like to have a deck, a porch, or three season, or closed-in thing. And that's probably going to set the tone, because I think they're going to negotiate that option with the seller. The seller's going to have some plans. The seller during that sales period is going to want it to look good. And my guess is, it's like everything else. If you see that, what Jeff was saying last week, you know, if you see that model, you tend to gravitate to that, because you know what it is. That doesn't guarantee anything, but my guess is probably the way it would work.
How do you feel about it, Ed, at this point?
I, I was really strong in terms of the house types, but in terms of this, I think this is a flexible, I think this gives flexibility, and I'm not as concerned about it. I thought for a while whether it would make sense to require that it be in back of the house, but as I looked at the site plan--
Some--
The buyer, the owner is going to say, here's the area where I get the most privacy, the most sun, this is what makes sense. I'm always concerned about, you know--
I'm concerned, I guess, you have a porch, I mean, one person might want glass all around the porch, another person might want just screens. I mean, these things could be built the same, but they still, the way they're finished off, could vary quite a bit. And, I don't know, I, I just, I don't want to box the developer in, but I'm, I'm just--
I think you do the rules and, you have rules and regulations, you have the design covenants, and it takes some skill to draft those, but I think it's going to be in the interest of the applicant to draft them, because it's going to take a long time to sell 56--
Right.
Houses.
So you've got to have some porches ahead of time. Like you said, Ed, I think somebody is going to want a porch right from the beginning.
Oh, I think there are going to be a lot of people who want that.
So, to me, at some point, I mean, I would think you must have a plan already for a porch, or you would pretty quickly get a plan. I mean, if, if I want to buy, or somebody wants to buy right off, day one, they want a porch, this plan's got to be created right from day one, and I can't see why--
I'm sure the architect, Wendy, has--
Yeah, well--
Ten porches of them.
Yeah.
But they're all, you know, it depends on, on which, which model somebody chooses, and then, you know, which lot and which envelope it goes on as to where. So, you know, if, if we had to come up with all the permutations for all the different porch designs, that would be an enormous task, and, and a lot of it would go in the circular file.
Yeah.
Is it possible, do you have a draft set of Architectural Review covenants that you use anyway, that the board could see, that John could see and be satisfied, that there's going to be some control over these that makes sense to the community? I don't know if that's asking too much, but Alec, you must have a draft set of Architectural Review covenants.
Or even show--
Again, Wendy has to have some porches that she does not--
Well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the Fox Globe. Can you put the Fox Globe on?
We have draft that.
Yeah. There's a front porch that looks like it could be a, not, that's okay. Yeah, so, that front porch is probably, you know, 10 feet wide. If it was 12 feet wide, it would be, but that's sort of the style you had in mind.
So you're saying you could add that to the side or the back?
Or the back.
Okay.
And maybe some language could refer to the existing porches in the community.
What do we want? Do we want to, I'm a little confused about 12 by 14. Do we want to say that, for example, that no dimension can exceed 14 feet, or the square footage can't be more than 12 by 14?
That's what I think that means, right?
Yes.
It's not to exceed 12 by 14.
But I, I don't care if someone wants, if, you look at some of these envelopes, they're very tight. And if someone, only way they could get their deck was if it was eight feet wide, do we care if it's 16 feet long?
Yeah, the developer proposed the 12 by 14, and I think we ought to stick with that.
So it's, so it's 8 by 14.
So then it's 8 by 14 and can't be 8 by 16.
And I think you're, I think one of your safeguards is the proportion of 12 by 14 to the size of the house, John. That's another safeguard.
And I think Mark said, it might be possible, along with the narrative design covenants, to include some photographs of porches, and should be similar in style to this, find five or six of them.
I don't think we would want to put that on the record. It's a condominium document. I mean, we certainly can prepare condominium documents that contain, you know, general design--
Architecture Review Covenants, and your Architecture Review Committee can reference--
Yeah.
Which can reference.
A lot of times there are rules that are not recorded.
The rules aren't always--
Usually, Architecture Review Committee documents are not recorded, right?
And that's, and if John saw a sample of those that, you know, I'm used to seeing in other communities, he'd be satisfied that there's some real, real teeth in--
I'm sad, I mean, I just wanted to bring it up, because I think it's--
Or, we could have language in here that says, when, say that these options are available, you know, the exterior options, along as they are compatible with the rest of the project, or the, they would, which they're located.
Well, that's what it's going to say. That's what those review covenants will say.
Exactly what you want to say, but if you say that in the decision, then, then it's up to Roland to decide.
No, we're going to, I'm, I'm leaning toward not saying it in the decision and relying on your covenants, but let's see your covenants. You have to show us the condo docs anyway, as part of the things you have to do before you can start building, so.
Many times, the condo associations are much harder on somebody than a town board ever thought of being.
The sort of thing that's--
It's like a historical district.
So that was, I mean, that was some of the discussion that we had yesterday about allowing that flexibility, with them not having to come back, as we saw recently with some of the other developers, and they got stuck. So, we're going to give Roland that cart lunch to do those things.
So these decks and porches will have to be inside that building if they're all--
Yes, yes. Yes, Ed.
While we're on decks, I just thought, I don't know the models well enough and the topography well enough. Will any of the affordable units require a second means of access, a second means of egress via a deck?
Well, they need a second means of egress by law, right?
Oh, I know that. But if you're up here and the deck is an option, it seems to me, if you're, if there's an affordable, well, you're going to have to provide the second means of egress.
Right.
But are there any situations where you have to build a deck to get?
You may have, I mean, the IRC requires that if you have a second means of egress, that you meet certain requirements.
Right, but if it's--
But it doesn't have to be a 10 by 12, it can be 4 by 6 and a set of stairs to grade.
Okay, I'm just saying, for the affordable unit, if that's the case, that should be included with the affordable unit.
It would have to be, because in order to get an occupancy, you'd have to meet the 3 by 3 requirement with the stairs down.
Right, I agree, I just want--
I don't think Roland would--
It's a little larger than 3 by 3, 3, 6 by 4 feet.
Yeah, 42, which was--
Are the rose, is the rosebud designed to be handicapped accessible?
It's not handicapped accessible per se, although, like in the first phase, it's going to be on a slab, so it could easily be handicapped accessible.
But isn't, to make it handicap-friendly, don't they just have to make the doorways a little wider inside and some kind of rail?
Yeah, but it's mainly, it's mainly just for mobility. I, I don't know, since these are for sale, we don't, we don't have to require the strict handicap, you know, construction. But if it has a first-floor master, and if it has an engra, you know, it has a garage, it's de facto more accessible than the other units that are being offered, and that's sort of as far as we went.
And we've already discussed the fact that, I believe we have, and I think the applicant has agreed, that if in the initial lottery, a household is selected who has some special access requirements, the applicant will make reasonable accommodation for that.
See--
Yeah, it is.
We were talking about the rosebuds being particularly friendly to a retired older couple or something like that. I just, you know, maybe this isn't a reasonable thought, but I was just thinking, for example, when my parents built their, they built a cape to retire in, they purposely put extra-wide doors in it, and with the idea if something happened, they could get a wheelchair through.
It's called adapt, adaptable, yeah.
Right, so, and sure enough, my mother had a stroke, and it was a real blessing that they didn't have thresholds in the doorways, and that these doors were wide enough that a wheelchair could easily go through them. I, I mean, is that something that's reasonable for us to request these units have?
I, I sort of feel, it might be or may not be, I don't feel strongly about, I feel that if someone's really handicapped, they're going to be in the flats and where there's an elevator and, and all that stuff. And it's, you know, maybe the houses, you know, because there's also an issue, if you're handicapped in a house, you have to maintain it, you have to do this, you have to do that. So this is mainly for someone who may have limited mobility, but not as complete, you know, not as wheelchair-bound. But, I don't know, I mean, you, we, I suppose we could say something about that, but it, and it's really a matter of a few doors. I mean, the front door is 3 feet, and actually, a 32-inch door is sufficient for a wheelchair to go through. But, I don't know, but, you know, I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
That was a question, because I don't--
And, you know, these rosebud being first-floor living, you know, for seniors or somebody who had the handicap and not be able to go upstairs and downstairs and everything else. I've seen several single-family houses where people lived in, and all of a sudden, somebody becomes somewhat--
A stroke or something.
Disabled, and with some conversion and modification internal, has not been major. They can convert over enough of the space, so it's still livable. People have not had to move out of their houses. In fact, there's, though sometimes, you know, I've seen where a son-in-law became disabled and moved in with the parents, and they just made some minor adjustments. It's something that can be done, usually on most of these plans.
But is it reasonable to suggest, since we're only talking about two units, that the doors be a little wider inside?
No, I think it limits, throws a, a larger burden on the building official to, you know, monitor it and, you know, cover it on building permits and everything else, and, you know, I, I just think it makes it a little more difficult.
I don't want to make Roland's job a bit more difficult. Ed, go ahead.
I have not seen that done on other 40B that we're on. Here, because the applicant wanted to have, offer affordable buyers a choice, you're going to know, and at least for the first owner, you know, those accommodations could be made. But I have not seen it done for all of the houses. The assumption is the market rate buyer has to do it, they'll find a way to do it. And legally, the access requirements for ownership housing differ from rental housing. There'll be a different set of requirements for the apartment buildings.
I just want to know these two units, because we've made a big deal about having two of the units, first, with first-floor masters, such that might attract a certain, or fulfill the needs of a certain.
I think they'll figure that out.
Okay.
Moving on to, let's see, this might be a good time to just take a minute to read a comment that came in this week, not in a butter, but a taxpayer. This is a letter from Julie Rupp, R U P P, from 96 New Estate Road. Hello, Mr. Bergman. I have heard that the developers of the 15 Great Road 40B project are seeking modifications to their agreement with the town, and as a Littleton resident, wanted to share my opinion with you. I do not live anywhere near this proposed development. I am specifically concerned about the potential for the town to back off of the perpetual rental low-income housing condition per the developer's request. The developer is using the 40B regulations to justify variances on town ordinances. Therefore, it seems to me, if the property won't satisfy Littleton's 40B needs, we should not be required to grant variances. The precedence that this project would set, especially with regard to wastewater septic variances on lots that won't perk, already concerned me. To allow the development to proceed and not have it fulfill our 40B needs for an extended period through 2030 seems like a true loss for our town. I am also concerned about the habitat loss, transient vernal pools, that allow the blue-spotted salamander to exist on the property. I noticed the last wetland habitat assessment was completed in 2008. That is awfully old for this type of data. I'm wondering if it is time to reassess the state of the salamanders and the pools. I would like to see the developer take a bit more care to not disturb these areas. I'd be interested to hear your thoughts on the above. Feel free to share my email with other town officials. So, just for clarification, to Ms. Rupp's letter, that is, the developer is not seeking modifications to back off of the low-income housing condition. In fact, the modifications proposed still satisfy the requirements of 40B in that the low-income ratios are going to be met. He's seeking modification to back off of all of the units having perpetual rental restrictions. And what has been discussed and will be voted by this board, if they're in agreement, is that market conditions are making it difficult for the developer to build the project with restricting all units to rental in perpetuity. The trade-off is that fewer three-bedrooms are being built, and the rental options are going to give elevated access to a large population of potential renters who might be elderly or invalid and would like to stay in town, but need an affordable unit and access to it with an elevated situation. So there are trade-offs being offered here, relative to keeping the agreement with the town to ideally-- ideally keep us in, above the 10% housing stock till 2030, that agreement with the town is not being proposed to be altered. The numbers that will stay in our account for the SHI units, those units that are counted in our affordable housing stock, will remain subject to the host community agreement that was negotiated prior. So I think that many of your concerns are addressed and have, and are being addressed by this board as we continue to deliberate and hear the arguments of the developer. The last thing you mentioned relative to the last wetland habitat assessment, the developer can speak to that. They had one completed as part of this project.
Yeah, we have an INRA, and it's valid, and we have a conservation management permit that addresses all of those issues.
And that's been presented to this board to the satisfaction of the board, I believe.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Of our attorney. We keep referencing the community agreement as being some kind of safeguard, when the future seems very uncertain and impossible to tell how much growth will happen in the next, you know, 17 years in Littleton. Yet this community agreement seems to rely on them to safeguard us. I don't understand how this could be enforceable or what kind of bite that that could have. I mean, I can't see us suing them because we had too much growth in the town. So I'm trying to understand the legal ramifications and why, if really this has any reliance.
They committed to retain a certain number of affordable units in their development that would keep the town over 10%, using the best projections that we had available to us at the time when we drafted the agreement.
Were those projections that we were shown?
Yes, yeah. And, and as I explained at some recent meeting, I think it was here, that this developer is only responsible for their share of the units that are, that are created. The town is responsible for the remainder. That, and we're saying that we've calculated that we need 100 units out of the, out of 15 Great Road to be countable on our subsidized housing inventory in order to keep us above 10% through the year 2031. So contractually, in the host community agreement, they've agreed to, essentially, to make sure that, that whatever happens, that, that, that they'll provide 100 units. If there's more growth than we project, where we formed our denominator, I think it was 3,800 units we had, we projected, and I recently saw an M A B C projection, which wasn't that far off. I think it might have been 37 and change. But the, if there's more growth in the, in the community as a whole than, than we're projecting, then the town's responsible for making up the difference. And that, that's why the town will be, which we're in the process of doing, will be updating our, our housing production plan. We'll come up with strategies for how the community wants to address affordable housing needs in the future. But that, and that's how we hold up our end of the bargain. We're not saying that this developer, any one developer, is responsible for meeting all of our goals.
That makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Because it seems to be a lot of our fellow residents in town here are relying on this development to keep us safe from unfriendly 40Bs for the next 17 years and, or 16 years now. And that just didn't seem to make sense to me. And I think that townwide, we don't have a good understanding of that, and maybe we need to somehow figure out a way to get people to understand that.
That's a brilliant point.
Yeah.
I, I think what she's hearing on the street is valid.
And that's what this lady says.
And what we're reading in these letters is valid. It is clear that people generally do not understand what you said, the, the idea of keeping our SHI. They don't understand this developer's commitment and obligation to the town and
Is limited.
What we're holding him hostage to. So maybe we could do a press release or something that makes it clear.
Well, I think what may be a more practical way to approach that, we're about to launch, we're about to contract with M A B C to come here and update our housing production plan. That will be a very involved process. It will probably take the next nine months. And there'll be a lot of public outreach and activities. And I think, you know, essentially, we're launching, I'd do it better than a press release. We're going to launch a whole planning process. We're engaging the community to help us identify strategies for, for addressing continuing affordable housing needs in the community. Where, I mean, the last thing we'd want anyone to think is that 15 Great Road solves all the, we've got no more affordable housing problems in Littleton because of we've got 15 Great Road. We still have, we still have the matter of, you know, housing our population, so.
Unfortunately, a large percentage of our population in town here believe that. And so we need to, we need to straighten that.
But it, but it will do that definitively for the next seven years.
Seven years, yes. We can count on that because...
The 40B regulations may change dramatically in the next 47 years.
Yeah.
You know, we don't, we don't, we can't predict the future very well.
There's no reason for us not to, to do our planning and come up with our own strategies, probably, see, maybe the term friendly 40B might actually come into vogue because it would, because if in order to achieve in the future affordable housing strategies, we want to, rather than, you know, change the zoning bylaw wholesale, want to encourage particular areas, particular sites to be developed as affordable housing. That is, particular sites that the town's choosing. Then typically, that's why you do, you know, a 40B where, where the developer doesn't have the right of appeal, because we're over 10%, and therefore, it's, the town's in the driver's seat to do the sort of housing, affordable housing that it wants to do. So that, that's an obligation that we have. We'll do that. And I think in that process, that people will come to a better understanding about how this particular project does not solve all of our housing needs for all time.
Thank you for that clarification.
You all right with that answer?
No, that's the answer I needed to, I needed to understand, because I couldn't, my mind just wasn't wrapping itself around the idea of trying to sue this developer in 2002, you know, 22, because suddenly we were below our rate, and it just didn't make sense to me. I understand now. Thank you.
Okay. Let me digress one second, because there was something else that the subcommittee on the decision talked about here. And that is, we, the developer is going to need to update the drainage calculations. And the engineer reported that depending on whether you put a cupboard porch or an enclosed sunroom, you may alter the drainage calculations. And she doesn't have any real ability to calculate the drainage with all possible permutations of every building that can go on site and the maximum enclosed area of porch on each one. So one of the things she commented on that was, on any porch or enclosed sunroom that has a roof or a covered area, that that particular property would have a recharge, drip line recharge trench. Thank you. And so I just wanted to make that comment, because I think that's important to the drainage calculations. And when we started to talk about that, the developer offered that we should have peer review started now on the drainage calculations, or at least agreed to at this meeting tonight, so that when Sue is ready with the drainage calculations, she and the peer review consultant can go right ahead and do that, and maybe have some information for our next meeting. So can we vote to do that now? Is that a good time to do it? Yeah. It's my suggestion, we use the same peer reviewer that we used before. I think he were responsible for finding us a good one, and we liked his
We liked him.
Response.
He was very understandable and very responsive, and addressed our needs in a manner we could understand.
And the developer has to foot the tab for that peer review consultant. I don't know if it's necessary to collect that upfront, if the developer just wants to pay the bill when it comes in. What's your pleasure? And what do you think town council should, should collect it upfront?
I always ask to collect it upfront.
Do we have a balance?
We have a balance. Things designed to cover this.
The balance is left is for the final building review for the permit, so I don't know if that will be incorporated.
Do you know what balance is left?
I think it's about $2,000.
About $2,000. It's not a lot.
Also, I don't think the peer review is going to be that expensive this time around, because it's already done. And I think it's going to be less, not more. So...
How much was the peer review the first time? Why don't we just make sure we have enough to cover half of that first time or a quarter of that first time cost?
I don't even remember. Do you?
The total was like $13,000 for the 5.
That was more than just drainage, too, I think?
Siri not available. Connect to the internet.
Are you asking Siri?
You're still walking, but you're going to tell us a joke.
Can't, not until I connect to the internet.
You could call them, you could...
We're just going to collect $2,000 from them. She just decided.
Well, no, I'm proposing it. You guys have to decide it. But I think if we collect $2,000, and they, they're responsible for the balance.
Do you need a vote on that? Or are we just sort of not in agreement?
Not in, not if, not if you're in agreement. Shake your head if you want to be heard. Raise your hand. I think $2,000 is reasonable, I think.
Is that reasonable, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now...
As the developer to pony up $2,000, we'll use the same peer review consultant, and we'll leave it to Sue to just connect with the peer review consultant and get us a written report.
And how soon will Sue, you have the materials done to a degree, the peer review?
We're probably two to three weeks out now that we've stopped moving buildings around. At least before we can get them to them.
I still have, I mean, this is a good time to bring this up. I still have some concerns about the size of the larger apartment units. I'd like to do some research. I haven't had a chance to research since our last meeting because of the holiday and being away. So I'm hoping that my research will satisfy my concerns. What I'm planning to do is go find out how big the buildings are up on the hill behind this unit, find out how big this, how these buildings, because I can't picture them, I'm not an architect, try to find out buildings that are similar size, and go see them, and find out what, where in towns around us that buildings of that size exist. It might be right up the street from them, right there, and that will be easy.
Are you talking about the, the single family?
No, I'm talking about the three apartment buildings.
Oh, the three apartment buildings. Okay.
The three apartment buildings. When we're talking about drainage, those three apartment buildings are part of the large impact on drainage. I just had, still have some concerns about them. I just think, I'm concerned about the size. But, you know, I may find out that, I'm hoping, that I find out that there are buildings every bit that big, right up the street there. I can see them, they look reasonable, and they're that, in that neighborhood, and they're that big. That's not even an issue.
Is this modeled after something she can drive to and see? Do you have those buildings in one of your other projects? Or does Concord have them on that back road there coming down from?
Are they the same size?
Concord's, you mean the Muse?
I don't know the names of them. I just know if I go to the Rotary where the prison is and go right, go right. Isn't there a project?
Yeah, so Warner Woods has buildings that are similar in size. I think they're, they're, they're three stories, but there's a fourth story under, under the eve, and it's going to be...
They also have structured, and they have parking. It has structured parking, so it's going to be an extra story.
Well, these are four stories plus these, and then it'd be the same.
And, and I think that's a good example, because they're delightful to look at. And, and you see them much closer than you're going to see these, and you're not offended by it. The, the break in the construction, you have something like, can you, can you put the building system for me?
What's it called? Laws?
Lawsburg.
Lawsburg Road.
If you go by, by the, to the Rotary, then go down by the prison, and then take a right at the end, you go left to West Concord Center.
So like I'm heading towards Maynard?
Yeah, if you lost it, don't worry.
Well, you'll have to, it's like if you're going to West Concord Center from Rotary, instead of veering off to the left, you go to the right, and that's Lawsburg.
And they're just about right there.
Yeah, it's like three, four blocks out.
And, and they're same, similar size. They're three-story plus, plus parking underneath, right?
Yes.
So these are very typical apartment buildings.
They're, they're not a solid wall like the old-style gardens.
So you, you've also been to our building in Tootsbury?
Yes, I did.
So...
Are those the same size?
Those, from Route 38, as you're looking at that building, that's four stories, same as this.
Same width?
Same width.
Because, I mean, to me, looking at, I'm not an architect, but looking on the plan, these, these buildings look ginormous to me.
So that's a 56-unit building. These are 48-unit buildings. That building has an, has an L, but it's generally the same size. So if you look at it, the end of the building faces Route 38. That looks very similar to the end of, of these buildings.
But are they about the same square footage?
Yes.
Are there four-story also?
From Route 38 side, that's four stories. If you went to the back of the project, you'd actually see five stories, because the grain drops off in the back, and there's parking underneath. So it's five stories in the back, and it's four stories from the street side.
I'll go look. Can I, I can, I'm allowed to sit with one person with me, right?
Yeah.
Can't take two, because then it's a meeting. All right.
You could actually take two, as long as you don't discuss anything.
Thank you. I'll do that.
We're still, there's a couple of subject matters that I'd still like to talk about, because aside from two or three things that still need to be talked about, we're probably getting close to winding this up. So let's talk about the other things, and if we need a second meeting to blow them sky high, or if we can do it here, and now let's try it. We still have to go through the waiver list. Bill has done a wonderful job of going through that, and that's sort of technical more than anything in syntax. So let me skip that for a minute and go to the other two issues that I think we need a lot of discussion on. Can I jump right in?
Okay.
Okay. Based on the conversations we've had here to date, the other two things that the applicant is asking for is waiver on the permitting fees specifically for the affordable units, and
Dr. Devlin?
The ability to be able to convert one of the four-story buildings to for sale without having to come back before the board. So, board's pleasure what you want to discuss first. Waivers. Never mind, applicant's pleasure what we're going to discuss first. You ask the, you, you bring it up.
You want to discuss the permit fees?
He's got it up.
So...
Oh, you're going to the waiver discussion, or you want to go to the permit fees?
Actually, I'll follow your lead.
Go to the permit fees. Give us your argument on permit fees. Let's go there first.
Okay, so, so what I'm asking for specifically is that the permit fees related to the affordable units across the entire project be waived. So building permit and other fees. That's one, one item. Second item is that the, and I, I guess I'll talk about that one first. And, and that is, I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's done despite what Ed has told you. Westford waived the permit fees when we, when the town, in Concord, I built a project for admittedly a nonprofit, but the town waived all of the fees of any kind. And I think if you, if you think about where we've come from, I think you'll see that, that on a project-wide basis, we've made a lot of concessions. And some of those concessions have been costly. So you want to just take a quick review of, of sort of where we started? Okay, we started with a proposal for 200 units. Okay, we started with a proposal for two hundred units, garden-style units, built along a subdivision road. And the subdivision road was an as-of-right subdivision road. It fronted an access on 119 and fronted an access on Grismo Road. Met all of the requirements, and both the neighbors and various boards in town asked us to give up our right to create a subdivision road that went all the way through. And we'd met with the neighbors ahead of time, and we told them that we would work with them, and we were true to our word. So we did, but that was a very costly decision. You know, what we ended up with was a set of private roads, which the taxpayer, this town's not going to pay for, we're going to pay for, and the future residents will pay for. But that decision was a concession, and, you know, it sort of generated a lot of other concessions. Go ahead. So we were also asked, you know, what we were going to do with the non-40B portion, which would have worked a lot better with a through subdivision road. But once we gave that up. Go ahead. You know, we were also told that by the neighbors and by the planning board, they didn't like this access. So, you know, we've given up our subdivision road, and then for extra special fund, this became much more difficult. The fact that we made a concession seems to have been forgotten in the process. So, and the neighbors thought that this was unsafe, even though it met all the subdivision regulations. So what we ended up doing is we ended up having to purchase these lots, and we ended up having to purchase them as a group, and all these lots. So again, a very expensive proposition so that, go ahead. You know, we could create an access through here. Go ahead. And so these are the various iterations. So not only was it expensive to make that fundamental concession and to, because we didn't get any extra units, you know, for buying this land, but it also allowed us to drop the height of the project and to create our larger units down here and to create lower profile across a wider area. And, you know, those are all economic concessions that we've made, and building affordable housing is expensive. You know, the for-sale affordable housing units will cost more to build from the ground up than we can get for them. And, you know, it's not an unreasonable request. You know, I think the town is going to get a tremendous benefit out of this project. As an ongoing taxpayer, you know, taken as a group, this is going to be the second-largest taxpaying entity in town. It's fifty-six acres. And I think it's a reasonable proposition to ask that the affordable. And the other thing is, in terms of the amount of effort, for instance, on the three-story buildings, the work of processing the building permit, doing inspections, is the same whether those affordable units are there or not. So, you know, my belief is that there's no incremental cost in terms of processing permits and doing the inspections, et cetera, because there are affordable units in there. So it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable proposition to ask that they be waived.
Roland, can you just respond something to me, because I like things in numbers? A seventeen-hundred square foot affordable unit would require what kind of a building fee? Can you give me those numbers again, for everybody? You said there was this estimated square foot construction price was ninety-something.
Just put them up on the screen.
Okay.
So go to the next one. It's a little easier to see in back view.
Except for squash. Okay, so the construction estimate is, I wanted to.
Tell the bottom builder permit fee.
I wanted a per-house building permit fee. What's it say?
At the top, it says plumbing for our two-bath unit is a hundred and twenty. So I think it's saying it's nineteen. Oh, I see. They're saying the affordable units, that ownership ones are nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty.
For how many units?
That's for all twenty-seven.
No, what that's saying is that for fifty-six units, it's roughly a hundred thousand dollars in permit fees.
One hundred thousand dollars in permit fees divided by fifty-six units is approximately seventeen hundred a unit. And you're asking us to waive the seventeen hundred dollars on fourteen affordable units?
On the.
On the for-sale project. So that's seventeen hundred dollars times fourteen. Now, what happens on the larger buildings?
So on larger buildings, I guess the fee is two hundred thousand dollars.
Does that sound reasonable? Divided by three buildings.
You can just say twenty-five percent are affordable, right? So fifty thousand dollars.
So you think that we will collect a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in permit fees on the three buildings and sorry, fifty-six.
Seventy-five on the other one.
Fifty-six minus fourteen equals, times seventeen hundred on the other one, is seventy-one-four. And you'll be saving seventy-five thousand dollars. That's all. I just wanted that number. And the other thing is, is it accurate to say that incrementally the three buildings aren't incrementally more because they're identical, or are there more inspections and more?
There's probably more ongoing inspections on the larger buildings than the actual, sure. Another question.
Okay. And one proposal that was made by the town administrator was, rather than waive fees, he was willing to have you stagger your fees on the larger buildings so that you'd still owe them, but they could be paid as they're built, rather than when the permits are pulled?
Well, I think the specific suggestion I made was that if they wanted to pay them by the end of the fiscal year, then there's no harm to the town, just so long as we get the full amount. But if it became an issue of putting the money up now, but where they, for some reason, weren't intending to go forward for a couple of months from now, well, then I'll take the money a couple of months from now. But I guess my concern overall would be, though, that this, you know, you already approved the project, and you didn't waive the fees a year ago. Any rationale for waiving the fees, I would think, would be directly related to whatever changes have occurred since a year ago. And if, for example, the town had gone back to the developer and said, please change your plan and come back with something else, then I think it might be reasonable to say, since you asked me to change the plan, I will, but I want you to reduce the fees. We didn't ask him to change the plan. He's brought that back on his own accord. I don't, it's not the policy of the town to waive the fees. I admit that it is the policy of some towns to waive fees. I worked for a town where it was the policy of that board of selectmen to charge no fee for affordable units because that community wanted to promote them. That is hardly the standard, though. That was an extremely unusual circumstance. And it's quite clear to me from what I know about the policy of the town of Littleton, that it is not the policy to waive the fees.
Actually, Cheryl had a question first, and I put her off, and then I'll take you. Go ahead.
Yeah, my question was answered. It was how much money, we were talking about, how much burden would this put on town? I mean, basically, this puts a financial burden on the town where we are subsidizing the building of these units, so to speak, because we're going to have to pay our inspectors for doing these inspections, no matter what. I guess I have a hard time seeing, you know, I guess we won't go there. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah.
As a lot of people may know, I worked in another town. You know, in the town where I worked, there was an Everline project. Three hundred and eighty-five units, totally rental, comprised of several multifamily buildings and a lot of townhouses. Three hundred and eighty-five units, 40B project. They requested, again, waiver of permit fees. That was denied. They paid the permit fees for all that. When we made the decision in that town, we checked a lot of the surrounding towns and found that very few across the state even waived fees totally for affordable. Some towns would say, no, offered fifty percent reduction on the building permit-only fee, not electrical, plumbing, and gas. A lot of towns don't waive fees. Again, there's a project on three hundred and eighty-five units, rental, no waiving of fees. And they occurred from the time they started till they finished, because of lawsuit, a couple million dollars in settlement, and they had to recur to add on units. Still, did not necessitate having to waive permit fees.
Also, I thought that the water department had already agreed with you on some waiver of hookup fees on those. Is that accurate?
No.
Okay. The water department didn't say that they would waive the hookup fees on the affordables?
No. No, so what, they specifically said they would not. And what they did say was, you know, we originally had one connection for the all-rental project, and they've given us the ability to do the same thing for the rental portion of this project. Otherwise, they declined to waive any fees. I want to make a couple points. In terms of when we pay the building permit fees, just in the natural course of things, there's a bunch of site work to do here. So it's very unlikely that nobody pays for building permit fees before they're going to start building. So, you know, if sort of the requirement is by fiscal year end, it's probably not going to be this fiscal year. It's probably going to be the following fiscal year, because we're not going to pull building permit fee unless you waive that requirement that we pay when we get the fee, at least until the summer, and maybe until the fall on the second building.
And that's not an unreasonable request, given that there is some advantage to having them pull the building permits and not have to worry about paying for fees on a building that they haven't started, they're not able to rent yet. It's not an unreasonable request.
So, Mr. Bergman, what was your proposal?
By what, well, my proposal was looking at it just from a fiscal year basis, that there's absolutely no harm to the town, that if the building permit was intended to be pulled, say, you know, within a month, and that if the building permit fee wasn't paid until June 30, then whether it gets paid now or then, it shows up in the same fiscal year. If it's to be paid after June 30, but it's still to be paid, then it doesn't show up in free cash on July 1st of this year. It'll show up as free cash as July 1st the next year. But at the end of the day, or the end of that fiscal year, if the town still has the money, then we're not gone.
Definitely not. And wouldn't most of the cost of the inspections being incurred in the year that they were actually used? I mean, for example, if he pulls the building permits today, but our building inspector isn't really looking at foundations, et cetera, until a year, till next August, our inspector.
It's going to take him thirty days to review the plans.
I'm questioning.
Yeah, plan review consumes a lot of time.
Does it? And this is, I'm sure, a matter of public record, so I'll go ahead and ask, because I just want to understand. Do we pay you a set salary? Do we pay you hourly? I mean, you're going to incur a lot more hours with this building. So do we pay you for those hours? What are the costs of the town directly? How fast are the costs of the town incurred with these building permits, is what I want to know.
I'm paid salary every year. But my intention is to bring on another individual to help me do the inspections, and he will be paid per hour.
But then that relates to her other issue, which was that inspections are not likely to start until the next fiscal year. And so if our concession is to allow the developer.
If the money is coming in when the costs are being incurred, then that's a wash at that point. The town's going to have.
So that's the discussion on building permit fees from both sides. Board's pleasure, do you want to, just let me just poll the board on your feelings about this? And then, I don't want to vote this until we have the other issue raised, because maybe we can do a little bargaining back and forth on the two issues. So, board's pleasure on fees. What do you think about fees?
I appreciated the historical walk down memory lane. I don't think it's relevant. I feel like the most I would go is the time shift that has been discussed on the affordables homework.
Okay. John?
I'm saying feelings is Jeff.
Yeah?
With the for-sale units, I could think about and maybe consider reduction of building permit fees on the affordable for-sale units only, but not, would not consider any reduction of permit fees for the apartment buildings. Because I know the complexity of the plan review and inspection services that are required on the apartment buildings, much more complex than single family.
Cheryl. I'm sorry, did I cut you off? Cheryl.
I'm with John and Jeff on this one. I have no problem with the time shift, as it covers the town's costs as they're incurred, but I think that we should pay fees.
Alan?
I agree with Jeff on the time shift issue. I'd also be willing to do some movement on reduction in the affordable fees. Not totally, but some.
That's what my intention was, reduction, not totally.
Yeah, you said fifty percent off. And Ron?
Yeah, basically the same thing, though. I don't think I'd have heartburn over a reduction in the building permit fee.
Are we just talking about building permit, not electrical, plumbing, and gas fees?
Yep. I think he's asking for off fees.
I was asking for off fees.
He's asking for off fees.
If I could restate, because, let's ask Roland, because he was asked how he'd pay, which we understand, the electrical, plumbing, and gas inspectors, do they pay by the hour based on fees collected?
They pay by the hour. And the fees are collected out of the fund that's set up, that's collected, and when the fee is paid.
Based on that, I would not want to consider waiving plumbing, electrical, and gas permit fees.
Okay. Okay, let's, again, I appreciate everybody's willingness to be polled and to give the applicant some feedback so they know maybe which battles to pick. And you didn't hear my comment yet.
I'm sure.
Well, I suppose the applicant's going to have, his hair's down on the back of his neck when I ask this, but we haven't seen the pro forma. And I think if we saw the pro forma and we saw the cost to the applicant of building all of this and the potential for profit on this, the request to waive seventy-five thousand dollars worth of fees is really nickel-diming this town in ways that I think is a little bit greedy. And that's just, that's my opinion. And so maybe I shouldn't have picked the word greedy. I apologize for that word, but.
Particularly since I didn't bring up the mitigation. So now I'm listening to Joe.
He's bringing it up now. That's a done deal. That's a whole different ballgame. I mean, we asked for rental in perpetuity. You're back here because you're going to have a wholly different profit margin on selling these units. And in the scheme of the numbers, seventy-five thousand dollars to your development cost. And in the scheme of the numbers, $75,000 to your development costs is, is miniscule in the scheme of our overhead and trying to respond to the taxpayers about why we gave you another $75,000 concession. We all have to go and live with these people tomorrow. So I'm a little against, and then, and then if we go to Bill's proposal, which is waiving half of the affordable unit fees, you're now down to talking about 12.5. To me, that's, that's penny ante. It's nickel-diming. We shouldn't even be sitting here talking about this. Having said that, I want to move to the next issue, where I said, I think that there's some grounds for negotiating. And your last issue, I think that is a hot button here, is whether or not we're going to talk about your ability to tell an investor or a banker that only two of the buildings are restricted to rental in perpetuity. That, to set the stage for people who are watching at home, that gives us a count in our SHI guaranteed of...
122.
122 units comprised of, how many rentals in perpetuity?
96 rentals in perpetuity.
96 rentals in perpetuity, so all 96 stay on our SHI, and...
14 from the for-sale.
14 from the for-sale singles homes, and then...
12.
12 from allowing the third building to go to for-sale. Or not allowing at this minute to go for, for sale, but to allow you to have that flexibility to tell a banker that there is the ability to convert to for-sale if the market doesn't absorb that many rentals in this location. Is that a fair way of putting it?
Yeah. Or, you know, for any other number of reasons, changes in interest rates, changes in market demands.
Now, having, I'll let you speak in one minute, I just want to set the table. That means 122 units, provided you build them all, and that's another if, but provided you build them all, 122 units stay on the SHI compared with your obligation under the host community agreement...
Of 100.
...to keep 100. So...
So this, this surpasses that standard?
This surpasses that. And if you were given this flexibility by this board's decision, and it turned out that, for some reason, one big building got built, a second big building got built, and only two of the freestanding ones got built, you would not be able to convert that third building, because you'd have to keep a set 100.
Right. I think just as a practical matter, either all three buildings are going to be built, one after the other, or none of them.
Or none of them.
You know, if there's, there's no in-between here. The infrastructure for the project is such that it has to all be built.
And you tell me, and this board, please, what is the argument that the bankers and financiers have given you about why they want that flexibility? Please.
The argument is, is that investors, particularly private investors, look for a second way to get liquidity in a, in a bad market. So it just, it just is, is one more way to get their capital back in the future. You know, rental property is sometimes, it's a, it's a good market, and sometimes it's not. And it's just, it's just an added piece of flexibility. Probably...
Okay.
It seems to be...
Cheryl, before you did. Cheryl.
I just...
Cheryl, one second. Cheryl.
Oh, I'm, Bill, I'm low. You can go first. Go ahead.
Okay. I, I guess I'm not totally clear what you're being proposed. As it stands right now, all three apartment buildings are rental.
Correct.
To stay in perpetuity. You're asking for the ability to change building number three...
Correct.
...at some point, if necessary, to be allowed to go to for-sale?
Correct.
Without the board's reconsideration?
Yes. So it would be considered an insubstantial change, and conversion would be allowed.
And that could happen immediately, or are you proposing that, say, after two years, that you would, in other words, give it a try for two years, or some length of time? Or are you not even putting, making that part of the proposal?
I'm not making that part of the proposal. I can't see into the future, and, you know, we will build it and rent it initially.
So the, I think that, a better way of asking it, Bill, is if the board were to consider your request with a time factor, say, two years, would that frustrate your financing ability?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Because, because my concern and thought process on that, like, okay, we give you the ability to change it to for-sale at any point you so determine, you can put it on the market for six months and nothing happened, bingo, all of a sudden now we decide...
Or you could choose not to even put it on the market as rentals at all.
Yeah, without...
I, can I go?
Yes.
I have real heartburn over this issue. I have heartburn over these buildings and the size of these buildings, which are much bigger than the original proposed buildings from the first time. Not that that's relevant. I, they are so far out of what the town has voted on for our building codes, that to allow these to be built as for-sale units when they've been proposed as rental units all along, these big buildings, I mean, I understand the condos up top, that makes sense, the market demands that, but for these huge buildings to be at whim doesn't seem reasonable. It seems like if we're going to allow these huge buildings, then we should at least have them rental in perpetuity. And if there's a problem, they can come back to us or a future board and get permission then.
How do you feel about Bill's proposal that maybe we, we allow them, we permit them as rental units, but we agree that after a period of so many years, it could be considered an insubstantial change, which means...
I guess...
...they don't have to come back to the board to, to sell them.
On, on the idea...
Back to the board.
But not noticed. But not noticed. Yeah. But not a public hearing. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I have a problem with that, because I think it should be a public hearing, and I think that the public should know about such a change. And also, we can't see into the future. I mean, we've talked over and over again, we can't predict the future. And by doing, by giving the, a future board or ourselves those options, two years, three years, five years, 10 years down the road, you know, or even six months down the road, I, I think we're much better safeguarded. And for the concession we're giving on allowing these huge buildings, I think we should have that concession. I think we should have that safeguard.
I have two questions for your argument.
Okay.
One is that, what difference does it make to the public whether somebody is living in a unit that they purchased, or someone is living in a unit as a renter, on these buildings that are identical in size and shape from the exterior? Once you allow them to be built, does it really bother you as a taxpayer if there are 44 new taxpayers, or just one?
It's very easy to go, personally, I think the count and projected growth that we have for a little...
No, that wasn't the question.
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, that's the second question.
This, this ties back in.
That's the second question.
Personally, I think that town, the growth of the town projected is very low. And I say this in my profession as a real estate broker and knowing what developments are coming online, I say it with confidence, I think that that's low. I think that we will have to do some friendly 40Bs, but if we start dipping down below numbers, all of a sudden, we're being, our hands are being forced again, and we're not looking at friendly 40Bs, we're looking at, gee, what we have to do. And having all three of these buildings being rental units gives us more of a buffer. It makes us, it makes us safer for longer.
Ed, go ahead.
I think one valid concern for a town is what happens when the building gets converted to the existing rental residence. It's never easy, particularly with the affordable. In any case, 25% of the units would have to remain affordable. But a person who rents can't necessarily afford to buy, because even though the down payments are low, the credit might not be as good. So that's an issue. So to give carte blanche approval, I think, could only be done if you had some real safeguards in terms of what happens to the existing residents. There are some state guidelines in terms of that. But I think, as a public entity, you need to be taken to consideration, that factor. My other concern is, and I don't, I mentioned this briefly on the side, there are three requirements to be able to count units in the subsidized housing inventory. One is that there has to be a regulatory agreement that assures the units will be affordable for 30 years. Now, they're going to be affordable either way. Only 25% are going to be rental, and those same 25% would have to remain affordable if the building were converted to condominiums. But I'm not sure if the owner has an absolute right to convert it to home ownership, whether the state would allow you to count all 48 units today.
All right. So we lose that... In that one building. We lose that count.
In that one building. I don't, I don't know. It's, it's an interesting question.
If we don't get a 30-year restriction on it. We, we automatically lose it. I don't necessarily want to put a 30-year restriction on it, though.
Well, I don't know, you know, I don't know how the state would look at it. They might say, well, look, the minute it gets converted, we drop those units. They're going to do that no matter what. I just don't know whether they'll give you full credit for the units today. But I think that's secondary to my first concern. The other two requirements to be listed on the subsidized housing inventory, there has to be a, a fair housing process followed. That'll be done. It's part of the lottery. They'll review that as part of the final approval. And of course, the units have to be, the rents on the units have to be restricted, and the incomes have to be restricted. There'd be no difference in terms of the incomes for, for sale versus rental. I have, I have not seen a board give the absolute right to convert. 40B is designed to accommodate changes, and there's a regulation that says if there's a change, you come before the board, the board decides whether substantial or insubstantial. And that's how it's done.
And a conversion from for-rent to for-sale.
And that would be considered normally a major, a substantial change. I think the HAC talks about that.
Yeah. It just seemed to me, from the standpoint of, of public policy, that, that the requirement to come back to future zoning board appeals to get approval, I, I just don't see that as onerous. I mean, he's done it, and the developer's done it in this case, and is, will be able to get in and get out, I think, on comparatively short order, with, even though there are some pretty momentous changes from what was approved a year ago. If the only change that the developer brings you next time is to take a, you know, a four-story building that you know and are approving in this round, and giving it approval to go from rental to ownership, I, I don't, I don't see where the requirement to come back here is that, is that onerous. And I would be, I'd be concerned, though, if the scenario we're dealing with is that we got a bunch of tenants in a, in an existing building who are now facing a change versus, I mean, I heard that, I heard the applicant say, he's going to build three buildings or none. Okay, well, then I guess he'll build three, and, and the third building will be full of people. And those people, it seems to me, have, have, they're the ones who are entitled to come to you at a future hearing and express their concerns about that.
They will be residents in the middle of that point.
Which is an, which is an interesting point. Bill had something.
No, a little, I don't know if perplex is the right word, that hearing, that investors be more willing to invest if it's for sale rather than for rent, whatever else. In my past experience, we had a 48-unit apartment building that was condominiums, stipulated, unoccupied only. Three years down the road, out of the 48 units, somewhere 10 units could not be sold. They came back to the town and said, we got to go for rental, because we can't fill them, because we just can't get anybody in here. That was going from for-sale condominium to for rental. Here, you're saying, you don't think that, you know, you're not sure if you can rent them, you want to go to for-sale.
Actually, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is that, is that some of our investors like the idea of having flexibility going forward, because none of us here can predict how markets work and how they change. And, you know, the for-sale market was in the dump two years ago, now it's back. And, you know, my crystal ball is not very good.
About as good as mine?
Yeah. So it's, it's really just a matter of flexibility. I think the board should, should vote. I think the state, you know, not only would we have to deal with the local boards, we'd also have to deal with regulatory agencies. Who would take very good care of protecting tenants? You know, in these situations, I think a lot of times, existing, some existing tenants decide to buy their units, some tenants want to continue to rent and are allowed to stay. And, you know, you, you only do these things if you can manage all that. And, and I think there's plenty of regulatory layers to deal with that. So we've asked the board, we don't want to, you know, take six meetings to, you know, to, to come to a decision. There's been a good discussion.
Let me, let me give you one more point, too. So if, if the board doesn't think that that's appropriate, something that would help us to some extent is take the word substantial, I mean, a perpetuity, out of the decision. So even though it would be a substantial change, we'd have to come back, the word perpetuity in our permit?
We have to have it to make sure.
For that, for that one building?
No. Not in perpetuity. Ed, what's the wording that we need to get...
Well, wasn't the... I thought the host community agreement addressed that the building shall remain rental...
It does. So we have a, we have a contractual obligation. So, so the word perpetuity is, is redundant.
Well, we've been told many times that the host family, the host agreement was not made by this board, and has not binding on this board, and has no jurisdiction on this board. Is that, is that correct?
Your decision, your decision on the comprehensive permit requires that all units remain rental in perpetuity. The host community agreement was intended to defend against a scenario in which that changed.
Well, this modification.
Right. Here we are. Where the applicant came back and asked for permission to convert some number, all or some lesser number of the units from rental to ownership.
But what I just heard, excuse me, everyone, what I just heard is the applicant saying, our original decision said in perpetuity. I heard Ed say, it didn't need to say in perpetuity to count all of the units initially in the SHI, the rental units, in the SHI.
30 years.
It simply means, needs to say 30 years. And so, right?
I don't think it has to say anything.
No, no.
It does.
You, you don't want to say 30 years, because...
Because then it drops off at the end of 30 years.
Right. And the SJC decision said, as long as there's no finite period for affordability included in the comprehensive permit decision, you must maintain at least 25% of the units as affordable units, as long as you do, don't satisfy underlying zoning. That was the Ardmore decision. So you do not want to put a specific time period.
But can we not say in perpetuity? That the approval, this board's approval of those three buildings are as rental units...
You ignore them as rental units.
Period. And we don't have to say in perpetuity. And then the applicant can come back, and our lack of the word in perpetuity will leave the next board, it's still a substantial change, it still has to be noticed, so that all of the occupants get their notice, will leave the next board able to look at it without seeing those etched-in-stone words in perpetuity. It'll give us the, it'll give us the count initially, and to keep it in the count...
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like we'll still have for, we will have at, at least 100 units that we need, and we will have some number of units that will be, need restricted in perpetuity, although what it, although what it sounds like, that, that's only going to be the ownership, the 25% of the ownership.
No, you're missing it, sir.
You have to maintain...
I think you're missing it.
The distinction here is between affordability and rental. You have to maintain, the distinction here is between affordability and rental. You're going to always have to have 25% of the units affordable.
As long as 40B.
As long as you don't satisfy underlying zoning.
Or, or we change the zoning.
Or, or you specify a certain period of time.
Is, but.
Not all boards, but some boards, the recent project I worked on advised that South Borough's EVA required that the units be rental in perpetuity. And the developer agreed to that, was advised by, you know, head good counsel, Guston Storrs. But you don't have to, the, the three requirements are, as I said, that they be affordable for a period of at least 30 years, but all boards are saying affordable in perpetuity. That's non-issue now. So the distinction here is rental in, in perpetuity, and you can just, you can decide that.
If you go to ownership, the, the share that have to be affordable will be affordable for as long as this is a 40B for, you know.
As long as it doesn't satisfy our.
Be in the D rider.
But so we could, our decision can say, all the units are approved, 25% of them have to be affordable in perpetuity, and 100 and, I forget the number, 44 will be rental. That doesn't have to say in perpetuity.
Doesn't have to.
By saying 144 are rentals, 25% of which stay in, affordable in perpetuity, we get to count all 144 for as long as they are rentals, and only if they come back to a subsequent board with notice, with publication, and a butters in attendance, that subsequent board can elect to let one of the buildings be for sale, provided it's still going to satisfy the 100-unit minimum under the host community agreement, and that board can decide what are the safeguards for the tenants, the occupants, the affordable?
The residents.
Residents there, and.
And whether it's owner, whether it's rental or ownership, you're still going to get, we'll still get our 25% affordable.
We'll still get to count the 25%.
I mean, there could be a scenario, if 40B goes away, the town might feel it's in its interest to have them as ownership units because you're going to get more tax revenue.
Yeah.
Okay, I have one concern to that whole idea. People forget, things change. For example, here in Littleton, the Garden Club built the gazebo in Fay Park, but that was, and established a fund to maintain it. But that was forgotten a long time ago, and recently the town established a new fund to maintain it or, or put a byline in the things. People, and that wasn't even that long ago, that was maybe 20 years ago. People, people forget and things change. I'd like some language, if we're going to not say rental in perpetu.
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity. I'd like some kind of language in there that says changing from a rental unit to an ownership unit is a substantial change. I don't want someone cut.
We can do that.
We could all be long gone, and someone come back and say, they didn't put it in there as perpetuity, so it's not important, you can call it not a substantial change.
No, we can do that.
So I want, I want something in there saying, it would be a substantial change and would have to come back to the board and put public notice, and, and all these new residents of Littleton would have the right to come say, this is how it affects me.
You can do that.
Okay, so now.
Well, and then Sherri was suggesting that in whatever language this is, there be inserted something about our thinking at this time, that, you know, we anticipate, you know, this is.
Life changes.
No, no, we anticipate one building.
Only one building.
Only one building.
Ever converted.
I don't even want to say we anticipate one building. I don't, I don't want to say that we anticipate anything. I, I think that, I think we just want to say it's substantial to make such a change.
Yeah, I think I agree with you, but we'll look at the decision language at our next decision subcommittee meeting and propose something back to the board. If that's the board's consensus, do I need to poll you, or do you all feel comfortable with that conclusion?
Can you restate it?
Yeah, essentially, it's going to say, 25% of the, all the units in the project for sale or for rent have to remain affordable in perpetuity, and 144 units shall be rental, that's our decision, and lots one and two will have for-sale units.
Or phase, phase, phase one and two.
Phase one and, well, the called lots one and two. And, and the buildings on lot three will be rental units. That will say rental units, will not say in perpetuity, and somewhere in the decision it will say, the request to modify by converting from rentals to for-sale units will constitute a substantial change.
Limited to one building.
No, we don't even have to say that.
You don't have to say that.
Because the limit to one building is limited in the host community agreement anyway.
And if 40B disappears and we want to, and they want to convert all three of them, and where, and, and a future board is happy with that, then hallelujah.
Yeah, as long as it's a substantial change.
They might want to also say, for conversion from for-sale to rental, they may.
Yeah, either way, yeah. Now, is the developer going to be able to live with that? So.
I just want to see the language.
Well, we'll see the language when we, when we go back to the next draft decision. And that gives you some marching orders. Now, having, having gotten that far, yes?
You know, one thing that Mr. Bergman brought up, you know, consideration this whole, when and if they decided to change a building to for-sale instead of rental, you know, should there be the language in there that, you know, just earlier, like a timeframe, you know, not less than two years or whatever else, and what, I think that was kind of thrown out, but, you know, Mr. Bergman stated, what if they build building one and two and they don't build building three or whatever?
Or they build.
Building one, two, and three, but no rental out, and all of a sudden then decide to change to, should there somehow be related to occupancy of the other two buildings? And then, if you can't get the third building?
No, I, I, I think the reason the applicant wants the flexibility is not because there's a concern that he can't rent those units. I think, or at least the way I would be thinking if I were representing a developer, is there might be more money in going condo.
Right.
Because you're going to finance these buildings, you're going to get a loan, they're going to be stiff prepayment penalties, perhaps, not, you can't always assume that, but that's likely, and rates alone now, you're probably going to try to lock into a, a term that's of a reasonable period. So you're not going to think about turning it into condos and, right away, I don't think. And the condo market is, for, for this type of unit, you're busy selling 56 houses, they're going to be much more attractive. The, the condo market still isn't very strong yet, and I think it will take a number of years for it to be sort of attractive, for those, that type of building to be attractive. And again, the problem with that is, you're going to have this condo building, then you're going to have these two other rentals, and whereas I think you can make a distinction between the for-sale units based upon design and location, it's a little bit more complicated with these, and you're sharing common facilities. So it's not an easy, it's not an easy sell, but you never know. Nobody thought prices would go up as much as they did, so you'd like to say, hey, there, there might be some money there.
I kind of agree with Ed. There is still a huge glut, so to speak, of the market of garden-style condos. The market has not recovered on garden-style condos at all, and probably will take a couple more years to, as opposed to the single-family condos that are selling like hotcakes, so to speak.
For-sale units.
For-sale units. For example, Mr. Marsh had absolutely no trouble selling his units, they sold quickly. And so I think that.
I also think two years is kind of a, not, kind of a silly arbitrary number because they're not likely to be occupied for the first two years anyway. It's going to take that long to build and get off the ground.
Two years application, or is it difficult about being issued, or?
I don't know, I just think it's an arbitrary number. We'll, you know, this will all still be fresh in.
Well, they have to come back now. I mean, I think the two years was in the case that they wouldn't be coming back.
Right, right. They have to come back anyway, so I think that's the safeguard.
Shall we go?
So I think, I think there's a consensus on that. I'm, I'm looking to wind it up, but that is, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, there's just a really short list of waivers that are different.
Yep.
And it just seems like it won't take very long.
I don't want to vote on the height waiver till I have a chance to do a little bit more.
I, I think we have one more meeting anyway to vote on the waiver list, but what waivers do you want to say are different that you want to show us to discuss?
So, I, I just wanted to, I want to make a couple of points. One is that the majority of the, of the waivers requested are the same as the previous decision. We've now broken the waivers down so that they are by lot, and I think Chris.
And Bill.
And Bill, I, I think, you know, pointed out some editing that needed to be done there, but in, in terms of the changes, it's a pretty short list. So it's the height of the, of the three buildings, 53 versus 49 feet. We're asking for the addition of a leasing sign on lot three that will face Nagod Park. On the leasing sign, the previous decision was for 12 square feet on each side, and whatever is in our design this time is 15.3 square feet. We have some directional signs on the for-sale on lots one and two that exceed one square We need a frontage waiver for lots two and three because we didn't get to put in our subdivision road, and we already talked about the building permit fees. So that, I think, is, is the substance of the changes in, in waivers. And, you know, Sue, Sue left, and I, and I've heard that, you know, we don't want to vote on the, the height waiver, but if, if I'm going to pay her, you know, a pile of money to do civil plans that can be peer reviewed.
Yeah, the drainage council.
I, I need to know that, that this is the plan.
Yeah, but, but you polled, we took a poll of the board on the height, and the only objection to your height is Cheryl's, and so even if it were voted tonight or next week, you're going to get, I believe, a four to one on the height as it sits right now, so.
You don't need a majority.
So I don't think that's a huge risk. Cheryl would like the time before the vote happens to go out and see it all, and I don't think that's an unreasonable request at this point in time. I don't think that should stop what you're doing, and I think we could, well, I was going to say, your peer review is going to take longer. I was going to say, conceivably, you know, go to a short timetable for the next meeting and close the hearing.
Hearing.
But, but you don't want to close without the peer review.
You don't close the hearing because.
No, not today.
These minds are still evolving.
No, not today, I'm not talking today, I'm saying, the next meeting, conceivably, we could get to the point where we close the hearing if we had peer review.
First of all, personally, I would like to see the decision final right before we close the hearing.
Yeah, well, that's.
To vote on. I mean, right now, we still got some work to do. We had a meeting yesterday, some changes, are still going through some of these, need to have a rework.
And we need all the review.
To get out a copy to the board member for review. I doubt that's going to be here for the next meeting, and if so, it won't even be in the final form.
What's going to happen?
I still think it's going to run one more meeting at least after that.
What's going to happen for closing the hearing is peer review and the final decision. Those are the last two things.
Right.
Because all of the outstanding.
Right into the final decision, and the format isn't now, it's a long ways off from what the, what final form is going to be.
John.
Chair, I put on, I mean, he seems to me, he needs some, these waiver discussions voted on in order to keep moving forward. To me, I mean, I know Cheryl's concerned about the size of this building, but here we are talking about renting them out and owning them, and now all of a sudden, if you, for some reason, you decide you don't like the height of these buildings, all this goes right out the window. So how's a developer move forward if he doesn't even know he can build this height of the building? I think some of these waivers have got to be voted on as soon as possible, and I don't understand, at some point, let's, you know.
So you want to take the vote on the height.
We're going to meet in a couple, we're going to meet in a couple of weeks.
No, I think the point John's making.
I don't think it's fair to the developer.
Well, I also think the point John's making is, we're really not going to meet again until they've got peer review, and they really don't want to do peer review without the height waiver vote.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Still have a, I really have trouble with the height and size of these buildings.
Do we have a January meeting?
The thing is, how much longer do we keep going on discussing the height of this building?
We've really been rushing this change.
Either we like it or we don't. You're the only person that doesn't like it. And the problem is, if you don't like it, everything we've talked about goes right out the window.
Well, then, certainly, because it, there's a five-member voting, you only need three positive members to vote on a decision for 40B.
What I'm hearing, John.
It looks like it's.
The whole plan changes, though, Bill, if they don't get that height. What I'm saying is, you're talking about renting the buildings, you're just talking about owning the buildings.
John, you want to vote the height restriction tonight?
Well, at some point.
The height waiver.
I know it's not favorable with everybody, but whether you like it or you don't, I think, two weeks from now, it's, nothing's going to change.
And it's not two weeks. Our next meeting is not going to happen until the period.
We had a meeting, the regular scheduled meeting.
No, she said nothing came in, so there's no reason to get together and meet again.
And you took a poll before, and of the eight or nine members that were here, there's only one person who didn't like the height change. So even after.
Well, let's, let's make a distinction. I don't think, I don't, it's not that I like it, but do I accept it?
I don't like it either.
And I, I guess, Cheryl, my, my view of it is, it's, and I especially like the waiver of height of building in lot three, because lot three is the most appropriate spot for a tall building. I would not, I would totally agree with you if it was up the hill.
That's where it's written, is, is at lot three, or the apartment building.
Are we rewriting the decision such that we're, we're taking out any height waiver for lots one and two?
Yes.
Yes.
So there is no height waiver on, like, lots one and two?
Yes.
I don't, so are we talking, I mean.
It's just the apartment building.
There's a, I don't want to vote all of these waivers because, quite frankly, I don't understand why we're going from a leasing sign of 12 square feet to a leasing sign. I mean, I don't understand a leasing sign needing to be four by six, quite frankly.
We're not voting all the waivers. John's suggesting that we just vote the height waiver tonight. The other waivers, they're not, a, a size change isn't going to stop his project or his, his costs. The height is. The height is going to, not knowing the height today is, may prevent him from getting his, his next step done, so.
You may want to vote on the last one, too, to get that rejected, so it's on the record.
Well, that doesn't matter either. I mean, we can vote that later. You guys may like something he does so much that you're going to give him that 50% off the affordable for-sale units and give him his 12.5. Maybe the peer review will be so expensive, he'll come in here on his knees begging for another concession. We don't know that yet.
If I can, with the way it's formatted now for, broken by, down by lots and everything else, we had the discussion yesterday, have gone through even since then with more in-depth review of what showed up on the computer today, some of the stuff that's asked for on lots one, two, and three, it doesn't really apply to one, two, and three, it's only lot one. If you put a sign on lot one, even if it was the whole project, it's not a waiver for lots one, two, and three if the sign does not appear on two and three. That's just one example. There are some things that are asked for on lots two and three that does not apply to two and three, and maybe you're on lot two or lot three. So there's some of that that needs to be changed. Okay, you need to understand, and some of the stuff that's asked for, it's a necessary, you know. So, you know, I've got two pages of notes going through each one of the waivers on them, of which 50%, I can say, yes, I agree, and everything else. The other 50%, there is some either explanation on before we consider it, or it needs to be changed because it doesn't apply to the way it's worded.
Should we have a waiver subcommittee? No, it's, it's the decision subcommittee.
No.
We're working on it as part of the decision, and he, that's a drafting, that's a drafting matter.
Point, but they are drafting matters.
That's a drafting matter. He and Chris are going to work that out.
So, so, well, before it goes to the board and say, do you want to approve, though, waiver number 20, do you want to approve waiver number 19? We need to make sure they're, they're, first of all, needed, or it's accurately stated.
Yeah. So we will have a waiver, we will have a full board review of the requested list of waivers at the next meeting, and we'll have those waivers ironed out so that they're in the right order and format for Bill to be satisfied with them, and then the board will see that all together as a board and vote on that. But John would like to make a motion now about the height waiver, and I'm going to entertain his motion.
Yeah, Chair, I'd like to vote on a height waiver from 49 feet to 53.
Approve.
So you make a motion to approve?
Approve.
The height of three buildings on lot three to.
Increase from 49 feet to 53 feet.
Right.
Well, a waiver from the Littleton zoning bylaw. Well, a waiver from the Littleton zoning bylaw of 53 feet versus whatever the bylaw says.
The bylaw says 32 feet.
Says, so, a waiver from the Littleton zoning bylaw of 32 feet to 53 feet on three buildings on Lot 3 only. I'll take a second to that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You can abstain?
No, I'm going to oppose it.
Okay. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So we have four to one on that waiver, and your, your waiver is granted, and that's just on that one waiver. But that allows you to go forward and...
Yeah, so we will, we will go forward. My assumption is that the plan, as it states, all the pieces have stopped moving around, and we'll go ahead and do drainage, and, so we can get it peer reviewed. And I appreciate you taking the call, and I'm sorry, but it was practical. I would like to get the sign designs into the record, which should take just a minute.
He gave concessions to go up to 12 square feet, and the number of signs.
Oh, I don't think we're, I don't think we're discussing them. I think he just wants to present them.
Oh, okay.
We're not going to discuss them tonight, there's not enough time.
Okay, good.
So, I just wanted to point out that in the original plan, we had a project sign and then a leasing sign on what is now Lot 1. We're requesting to add a leasing sign so that it can be seen from Nagog Park Drive, and the, the designs are changed a little bit. So this was the original approved entry sign, this is a redesign, which now has both the rental and the for-sale portion on it. This one is a hair smaller, so there's no waiver change request there. This was the approved leasing sign, and this is a request and has a changeable placard on the, on the bottom, and these are the types of things that could go on that placard.
So, could you go back and show where that sign's going to be? Is that the one that's...
So that's going to go over here.
Here and there, okay.
So are there two, one sign or two signs on Great Road?
There's two signs on Great Road, which was originally approved, it had two signs, but we added a leasing sign that can be seen from Nagog Park Drive.
On the Great Road sign, was the original one on a, on a stone wall that you couldn't see through, and now you can see through and under it? Or is that...
That's been staying the same, he's not asking for any additional waivers.
No, but doesn't, can you see through, the one on the right?
You can see through this, you could see through here, but on the real small, so this is...
He's not even asking for a change on that.
I'm not, I'm not asking for a change in the waiver, but I wanted the design...
The design is changing.
The design is, looks like a tremendous improvement.
You like that? I, I like being able to see through, because sometimes you like to talk for traffic.
I do, too, and the fact that there's not so much bulk around the sign is always a winner. I do have a problem with increasing the size of the, the leasing sign, because we already have given a waiver to have two signs instead of one. I don't have a problem with the sign off Nagog. Does anyone else have a problem with the sign off Nagog? I don't think any of us have a problem with the sign off Nagog. I just have a problem with, we've already given you a big sign, and we already gave you two signs, now to have, make it two big signs, just...
But when we have this discussion at the next meeting, would it be possible to just bring in mock-up boards that size, I mean, even poster board that size?
Change is, is minimal, by the way.
That's what I want to see, I want to see the two poster boards together.
We had a movable placard to get in by design in the middle of that, was it not rented?
Yeah, and it's going to be hanging under instead.
Right, now it's going to be hanging under, and just really change the design a little bit. But I, so Cheryl, you've probably seen that sign, it's almost identical to our sign in Tewksbury, that says Village Green.
Well, I'm going to go to Tewksbury, so I'll...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not that big, it's, it's actually pretty small.
Is that identical to the one that was updated?
That's correct, yeah.
I'll take a look at it. But, because, you know, I...
In communities around here, surrounding Littleton, there is a distinct push towards going to minimal signing, less signing, and people note it, when there's lots of less signing, people, the smaller signs stand out even more. I was just in a community where every McDonald's doesn't say McDonald's anymore, there's just a small gold M.
Yeah.
I think you'll like that sign, it's pretty small, we had the corner of the building in Tewksbury, it's pretty small. I added the website, which we didn't have on there, I know that was a, that was a, really a mistake by us before, I added a little, little bit, and again, the placard hanging down versus being in the middle of the sign, which was, wasn't that practical.
I'll take a look at it.
So the placard probably won't be...
But you should probably, I don't think everyone's going to go to Tewksbury with me, so you might want to bring a lot of...
So you only say three signs, but are you putting on Lot 1 and Lot 2 signage that says, "Is Village Green and here's Meadow whatever"?
Yes. So those are directional signs. And because, because, you know, these are set up as villages, each one, the village will also have an identifying sign that's greater than one square foot.
Yeah, because you have in here for signs on Lots 1, 2, and 3.
And you need to have, you need to have...
That's what I'm saying, yeah. If you ask for background color change on signs on Lots 1, 2, and 3...
Because, because none of these signs have just two colors.
Right, right.
And not, so all the signs on, on, on 1, 2, and 3 will be multi-colored.
Right, right, so you are going to have...
Yes.
So you're going to have a total of six signs? Is that correct?
No. One, two, three, four, five, maybe.
Well, he's got three on the exterior.
No, no, she's saying directional signs. Every village is going to say the name of the village on it.
So if you drive...
And every placard on every house ties to the color of the village.
So that's, that's a total of six signs, yes?
If there's six villages, we would be...
No, because there's three on the exterior, three signs on the exterior, and then each, each area is going to have a sign on the interior, is what you're saying?
Each village, each village on each lot.
Within the lot.
Right. But they're classified differently in your bylaw, though these are not directional signs, these are, these are leasing approbation signs. The directional signs are, so people can find where they're going, just that...
So if you live on this little loop here, and that's called Meadow Lark, there's going to be a little sign that says Meadow Lark, it's just a little...
That's, yeah.
A street sign, you know, kind of a street sign.
Yeah, I think it'll be a directional sign, it'll be a little low.
Yeah.
I think it actually identifies how high off the ground we can have it, it's, it's low.
I would, I would be more, more willing to give you a height variation for such a sign than a size variation, because of such signs get buried by snow. So I would be more willing to see it look more like a street sign.
We agreed I wasn't going to talk about the signs tonight, I was just going to have them, enter them into the record, it's 10 of 10, and I want to call it.
Well, he hasn't mentioned all the signs, though. He hasn't mentioned all the signs.
He entered into the record what he wanted to enter into the record. He can enter the rest of the signs at the next meeting, I'm calling that it's been enough time tonight.
Last thing, I'm assuming that you're going to approve the frontage waivers?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll make that assumption.
Yeah, make the, you can make that assumption, we're past, we're past saying no to that. We need a time and date certain for the next meeting, and I think it ought to be calculated to coincide with when you think your peer review will be done.
Can I just ask a quick question? The frontage waivers, what, what's he talking about, on Route 119? The closeness of...
No, because there are three lots.
Oh, I see, because you're calling three separate lots, and lots 2 and 3 don't have any...
Correct.
Public front, okay, no problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So...
I'm not getting any closer to 119 with anything.
What's the time and place? What do you think, a month? The end of this month?
Um...
Three weeks?
You, you have to do the drainage plans and get a peer review, that's not going to happen.
Yeah.
Our regular meeting in February?
So why don't we schedule a meeting, in the meantime, so we can, and we can talk, and if, if that isn't going to happen in time, I'll come back to the board.
Yeah, that makes sense. Let's schedule you the first of February.
Okay, because I don't think I'm, I'm going to be here for the regularly scheduled February meeting.
Yeah, so let's schedule you like the first week of February, and if you can't do it, then...
You got a date?
2/6, it's a Thursday.
I know.
2/6.
Everyone look at their calendars.
At 7:15.
Why 7:15?
You want 7:30?
Yeah.
Because I don't like to go until 10, that's why.
Yeah, but...
The theme is not going to make any difference.
And it gives us a chance to deal with our families.
Okay.
2/6.
Can, can we have always 6?
Yeah. 7:30.
7:00.
Sorry. 7, 7:30.
And that way, if you can't make that meeting, we can get a quorum to come in, open it, and continue it.
Sherry, 7 or 7:30?
That's a Thursday.
7:30.
Okay.
They just decided on 7:30.
We need to do a motion.
Yeah, please. You all right with that date?
Yeah, I just got to, I got to figure, I'm going to California again, and I got to...
It's a Thursday, right?
It's a Thursday, I should be fine, I'm just going for the weekend.
Uh, I will be in California then.
He'll be in California, and he's been very faithful to all the meetings.
When are you leaving for California?
The 5th.
What about the next week, is the 13th? Everybody around the 13th?
I have a conflict, but I could be around.
Sherry, what did you say?
They're not, the 6th is not, the 6th is not working for everybody here.
13th is fine.
The 13th is fine?
That would be our regularly, would that be our regularly scheduled?
No, that's not our regular one.
I won't be here the 20th.
You know, you know what, though, let's make the 13th our regular meeting, because the 20th is school vacation, so there'll be others who can't make that. You can't do the 13th. How, what day are you going to California?
5th.
I can do the 13th.
What's that, a Wednesday?
Another day that week. The 4th?
Or about Tuesday?
Tuesday the 4th.
How about Tuesday the 4th?
Are you in town then?
Yeah, he's not leaving till the 5th.
Why do you know they'll be ready?
Well, if they're not, we'll, we'll get a quorum to postpone it.
They may know by then when they will be ready, and we could...
All right, Tuesday, February 4th at 7:30 work?
Yep. I make the motion, we continue the hearing for 15 Great Road 2 LLC 2, February 4, 2014, at 7:30 PM.
Second, please.
Second.
I'm concerned.
I'm going to be coming back from California on that day, if I get a flight delay.
Are you going JetBlue?
I guarantee, I'm pretty mu, I'm pretty much going to guarantee you that they're going to get a...
Actually, I'm on JetBlue.
A peer review delay. I, I don't think they'll make that date.
I know, but I hate to...
I just want to put something certain in there.
I hate to, I'm going to be coming back on that day, I should be back in time for the meeting, but I'm worried about it.
Over, you'll be able to watch it on, just set your DVR.
She does, she's got, well, we're not going to vote on that date either, we're just going to get the...
I know, but...
Peer review reports.
We, we end up voting things that we don't anticipate necessarily, and we can't tie the board's hands that way either.
What's Tuesday the 11th look like for everybody?
Like February?
Yep. Better chance of making it, anyway.